It is six thirty. It is, yes. I'll have to raise some general items for that meeting. Get the battery changed. What was the meeting on the ninth of July today, six thirty? Excuse me. You just tore that. Right, okay, so to kick off, let's start off. Item number one, apologies and reasons for absence. So I think by now we've all been advised of councillor Evie Tempest. She has resigned her position on O T C as of today. Actually, councillor Ainsley obviously is still off with his with his ailments. So, sorry, and Sally, thank you very much. We received apologies from councillor Watson, of course. So I propose that we accept the apologies and reasons for absence. Do I have a second there? Thank you very much councillor Park. All those in favour of accepting reasoning, that is unanimous. Lovely, moving on then to item number two, declaration of members' interests and application of dispensation. Does anyone have any interest they wish to register today and declare or any dispensation they seek? No. Lovely, item number three, deputations from the public. It would seem, well, despite the fact we've got a half member of the public, we should get to you, sir. Okay, item number four, to verify the minutes of the meeting on twenty third of June. So I have a revised copy of the meeting minutes in front of me here whereby the internal auditor Stuart McDonald's name has been rectified to the correct spelling, which was keenly pointed out. Would anybody else care to make any observations? And instead we have not suspended stamp orders today, so if you could kindly stand councillor Brooks, go ahead.
That is fine. We refer to minute six stroke twenty five dash four by the minute system confirmed accuracy of the meeting held on the fourteenth of May twenty twenty five, proposed by Martin Brooks. Not councillor Brooks, not that I'm worried about my title. Seconded by councillor Sally Anne Watts were deferred in favour, it says on all in favour. I've got a bit of a muddle with this one, but I'm just wondering why we don't have the minutes here tonight corrected so that we can, because they were pretty badly messed up. I may have noticed, you know.
Are you talking, sorry, about the fourteenth?
Yes, which was around the meeting. We did defer them. I put my reading glasses on and I can see that word there now. I didn't have. But we should have them here tonight to accept them and end it. Because before we move on to the next meeting really, they were rejected because there was, I believe, possibly a template used from a previous meeting because we were unfortunate that Joyce Lucas was put on to the Parks and Planning Committee, when she's not been a member of this council for quite some time. So there was lots of mistakes. So we need to have those minutes all corrected for that council. And then the last one, which is definitely a bit missing. When we agreed the signing of the H R G A, it should have been noted that that was subject to the chairman, because that was agreed by members, checking the bank reconciliation for March, because we didn't have that on the evening, which was needed so that we could reconcile the figures. And I assume that the chairman did go and
Yes, he would have.
Before he signed his life away.
Checked and signed.
But it needed to be noted so that we, because that was quite an important.
So Cathy, if you wouldn't mind bringing back the minutes.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
So that was for minutes zero six stroke two five dash nine, but didn't have a complete.
Thank you.
Minute.
Are you happy to?
Yeah.
To amend that, thank you Cathy. And if you wouldn't mind bringing those revised minutes of the previous meeting annual back to the business. So we'll receive those after the next. Yes. So with those amendments, does anyone else have any suggestions or comments? So I propose that with the with the amendments made to those minutes that we accept them. Do I have a second there?
Oh, that's why I wasn't there.
Thank you very much councillor Brooks. All those in favour of acceptance.
I'm glad it's really enjoying itself.
There you are. Can you see that that's what you're packing then councillor Brooks, saying as you seconded it?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be that past carried. Would you like to sign this copy, Cathy?
Yes, please.
Councillor Brooks, yes, next.
Can I ask that you consider moving agenda like?
I'm already going to do that, sir. Item eleven to item.
To like now. So please, yes, we have only a new member of the group and join us.
So as so prudently suggested by councillor Brooks, that's going to be item number eleven up to now, which is the co-option of Mr Harris and join us as now. Very good. Any any immediate thoughts or queries that the chamber has to ask at the moment?
And I propose that we co-opt Mr Harris.
You certainly may.
Oh, we've got a problem. The form's changed, we now have to agree the form first.
I think for the purpose of it, let's do this now. I can't see that there is a reason that we wouldn't agree that.
I believe the councillor will get a form, because you're the chairman, because I'm confused. It will get a form to sign which will be correct.
It's the it's the physical co-option form that has changed.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that when we get.
It's conveniently called that, the new form, which is what I.
Well, if you have one, we don't need to see it.
But it's a new kind anyway.
Okay, so for the reasons of doubt, we will move.
Item eleven. To number five.
Yes, item number cancel.
Oh, you want to consider the issue form.
Oh, right, number ten.
Ten. Lovely, let's move ten to now.
Sorry about that.
All those in favour of support, sorry, do you want to make observations?
No, no.
Lovely, so would you like to propose the that we accept since we're all control?
I'd like to make a comment on it, but I know that you'll be in time. Two people timing.
Oh, you can.
Um, no, I I I'm a bit amused by rather than councillor asking for somebody to put in words a hundred reasons, words why they want to be a councillor, when our standing orders say that the person can't canvass members. To me, if you're going to write why you want to be a councillor, that is canvassing. And I know Cathy said before the meeting that there may have been some changes legally, but I wondered if we could check, because the last time I looked at the Local Government Act, and we've always had issues with this, Local Government Act doesn't set a procedure for co-option. It just says someone buys, the council co-opt if they want to. We've had a big problem with co-option forms over the years here. We've even had chairmen who have demanded C V's from people, which is complete and utter nonsense, I'll say. I don't see that we need to ask the gentleman about why he wants to be a councillor. You know, it's we're not the electorate. I think we should just be grateful that these people want to come to the council. And I would really like to check, maybe from the L R A C, what we should be adding or what we can't add, because I know we we have the statutory questions as whether the person works, owns property or lives in the area. Because I was always led to believe that's all that needed to be on the form, and it was lots of silly things were removed.
Right, can I? Can I come back to that? I've done my initial read on three minutes.
Right, just stand up.
I've got to stand up, yeah. We've got to get C C by the end of the night. This is not, this is in order to comply with the Electoral Commission guidance. Yeah, sorry, does not comply with the Electoral Commission's guidance for candidates at parish council elections in England fifteenth of October twenty twenty four. Changes have been made to comply with the Electoral Commission guidance in the following sections. Eligibility to be a councillor and the criteria must be met. And the reasons why a person is disqualified from being a town councillor. Disqualifications Electoral Commission and qualifications Electoral Commission. So it's not us being picky, it's not R C C being picky, it's it's government.
Which item?
But that's how I read it in the Local Government Act. I think the piece that's been added past those things that the Electoral Commission have asked is totally irrelevant and unnecessary. We we it's been read out very clearly what the Electoral Commission has said up to date. And that is the same as the nineteen, whatever it is, seventy five, is it? Local Government Act, because if we are going to ask these people to fill out this form, which then we need to look at our standing orders of our canvassing. Because if I receive an application form that's telling me why the person wants to be a councillor, that's canvassing. That's like the election in Bali for, they're dropping off leaflets and telling people why they want to be their county councillor. So I think we need to look at. I don't believe that that last section, apart from the statutory two points, is required. I'll shut up.
Shall I send the term R O C tomorrow and then?
Thank you very much Cathy. I mean, for me, just to add my top and it's, I'm just saying it's being illustrative.
Yeah, really, I agree, but then if we're going to do that, we need to change our standing orders.
Well.
I'll get feedback.
It just this form is a little bit clear for standard.
Please councillor.
The form itself is a bit ambiguous. It says councillors may be invited to discuss the application of members of the council. A decision will be then made at this next scheduled council meeting, and that in a sense is what councillor Brooks is saying. That seems to me a bit like canvassing down. But then it said are not permitted to attempt to canvass members of the council with regard to the application. So it's a bit ambiguous or confusing.
Well, R C C.
Yes. Right, based on the fact that we are at least complying with the overriding legislation of the Land Office, I suggest that for the time being that we accept these papers as being a good indicator and a good usable document. Would anyone care to second that at the moment?
Can I make a amendment? Sorry, I make an amendment, but as Cathy was willing to send it to the L R A C, that we that Cathy was asked to do that to be reviewed so that we aren't asking things that we shouldn't ask for candidates. Because the first part is perfect.
So would you like to propose that?
Yes, as an as an additional or amendment, how do you want it?
Yes, Wallace, it's your amendment.
I propose that Cathy, our deputy clerk, at some point approaches the L R A C to see whether we are allowed to have part, shall we say part two of it? Which is the add-ons or most of the C V part?
Lovely. Would anyone care to support that? Lovely, from councillor Park, all those in favour of accepting the document with councillor Brooks's amendments, forward. That is unanimous, thank you. Lovely, right, on to item eleven now. Now we have gratified those documents for acceptance.
I've already put a proposal on the page to accept.
Okay, so you have, so we can get on with that. Do we have a second there for councillor Brooks's suggestion to co-opt? I will support that, I'll second that. Lovely, all those in favour of co-opting John Harris? That is unanimous, thank you. Welcome to the team, John.
You're going to sit over there.
Yeah, I've been here now.
You certainly can. Just want to feel free to share a few words if you would like and. Yes, do we have? Do we have the papers for John?
If he wants to sign, please.
So can I just do?
Rugby. And Rugby Newcastle, New Switch, Italy.
Submarines?
Italy.
Hello, I'm sure.
Very tired, it's good to spend all summers there. Quite interesting, because I don't know whether I've been even allowed to bring my seat. It's not.
It's awful nonetheless.
I think Cathy knows those people just knows it.
That's the second time that's been a gentleman escaped to the ex-love.
That's probably somebody wanting the thing upstairs.
I can't imagine the team would be keen and eager to charge in here and. But you never know.
But Sarah said that it's very rare to not have a parish council that has given the right word, she said, most of the parish councils, she doesn't just do this, Sarah, she said they all have people attend. Even at England.
Two members of the public go in and add into the meeting.
It's a bit late, but yes, go ahead. Normally we have a council, don't we?
I mean, we've got two days.
We need to, do we need before we start again now? Is Cathy still sending the agendas to the open war councillor?
To the what the?
Running council house.
The R C C war, open war councillors.
Because it was once approved that that would happen. They got scared off because they weren't allowed to talk under the previous chairman. So maybe we could be reaching out to bring them back. I think that's a good idea. Anyway, I'll shut up, because we'll probably be in the meeting.
So on to the next. Right, so any reports from the councillors and any questions that need to be raised at this point? Looks like no. Super, chairman's report. Okay, so as as we all know, it was Armed Forces, Armed Forces Week, I think it was. I attended the flag raising. That was a nice event, nice remembrance event. And it gave the opportunity to, put in very sort of quick informal words with the likes of the High Sheriff, the Lord Lieutenant, some of the R C C senior officers and a number of interested residents. That was then followed up by V and V J day celebrations, for which our contribution has been heartily thanked by Sarah Finesse. I think Cathy did a wonderful job in organising that and helping out, so thank you very much for that. And yes, I T C got a good round of applause from Dr Finesse, so that was nice. I then later attended Open School Speech Day, meeting with the headmaster and the bursar. And they're both quite keen to work more collaboratively with O T C as well, so good all round. Number eight, correspondence. Please.
Right, so just good news, we have a little card from a visitor in Portsmouth that was sent about statue. So it's always good to get good news and to actually, you know, actually post it to the office, you know, very exciting. We had, we do have a request from R C C. So a young lady called Anita, she's based in Leicester. She would like a memorial bench on the corner of Ladywell and Burley Road for her brother. She wants to purchase the bench and she will maintain it. So I don't know why the county council have sent it to us for agreement, but they said it was our.
Lovely, because it's in our.
Oh, in our area, okay.
I mean, it's trustworthy responsible for the bench.
So how do does everybody feel about that?
It's like putting a little snag on the bench that's there already.
Oh, there's a bench there already?
I know, that's a, is there a bench there already?
Shall we bring that back?
I think so.
As a as an actual paper, if that's a that's a formal request.
Yeah, I didn't know how it was, yeah, okay. Right, so this year we have obviously what Chris has just mentioned, the V E day, but we also have V J day on the fifteenth of August. So nothing is on the government website and obviously it's too late now to do anything, but most counties are doing a service at the war memorials. So the meeting today, we talked about maybe the mayor, obviously Reverend Ellis, and then the High Sheriff and the Lord Lieutenant doing a memorial around for the V J day, inviting local people. And then followed on by Rocks by Rail.
Followed on by?
Rocks by Rail.
No, because they've got Singapore, is it?
They've got.
Steam engine.
Yes, that's right.
For Singapore, yeah.
So does everybody think that's a good idea to?
Yeah, I think if if there's.
That's what they like to do. Well, it's not an invitation, it would be.
Doing it.
Yeah.
Shall we throw that open to the floor?
I think so.
Anyone got any thoughts about that?
I I thought we just commemorated it ourselves the last weekend.
No, that was V E day.
I know, but it was billed as all three things, Armed Forces, V J day, V E day, which upset some people. I I'm I'm just, I don't have any personal views on it, but if the mayor wants to attend something small, I believe from some people didn't attend because the J day was because there's some political, I won't go into the details, there's some political thing about V J day which some people find quite upsetting and don't want to be part of, but I don't see any objection to the mayor taking part for those. I would, I understood there was something going to be happening at St George's Barracks, was it, or Kendrew Barracks? There was supposed to be something I saw online that they were doing something for it. Yeah.
Are they going to march through the town again?
No.
There there will be no march, there will be no.
No service, no church service, no.
If it's all right with you then Cathy, because that's a bit of a surprise one, we'll discuss that and have a bit of a chat.
Okay. Right. And then as the party in the park was a great success, especially with the fly past. How does everyone feel about booking an event for next year at the end of the Armed Forces Week? So it would be the twenty eighth of June twenty twenty six. And the only reason I'd like to mention it now is because Melton Mowbray have already booked their dates for twenty, for May twenty twenty six. And I think we need to sort of get on to this rather than leave it to the last.
That's it, problem with that.
It's the twenty eighth of June, yeah. So it's the end of the week like we did this year.
Yep, I think that would be widely supported.
Thank you.
I think one of the things I get from people is we don't seem to do enough for Armed Forces Week. We have a lot of veterans in, as we know, from the Breakfast Club and things like that. And people have said to me that we don't do enough. I don't know what they want, but we just get the little ceremony, which is very nice, but people can be at work. Because some veterans, for everybody who's been in the forces are veterans, so some veterans are at work. So they can't attend that small event. And then it just seems we have the party at the end. So I was just wondering, as we've got a year, whether you could feed that back to people like the Lord Lieutenant and Rotherham County Council, that there is a amongst veterans, older and younger, that we don't do enough for them.
Well, the idea.
And that has been put on social media as well.
Okay, so the idea then is to get more military involved, maybe on the park, like tanks, or not quite tanks, sorry. But, you know, something bigger, because this year, well, I did say tank, but I did clean a tank. I mean, like a bigger piece of armoury, I don't know, something, but we can get it this year.
Because we used, sorry, we used to have a Armed Forces Family Day and the barracks were invited. And actually, you say tanks, we used to have the jeeps and things.
That's something, that's why I mean the jeep.
So yeah, I think we all. Talking pre-Covid, so that's when everything has stopped and.
So I think we all agree in principle that it would be a nice thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful.
Maybe a bit more.
Yes, yeah, and invite more. Correspondence received Cathy?
Oh, no, that was the. That was the, sorry, that's me.
Lovely, okay, on to item number nine, the bank statements and budget. Comments from the floor. Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I had my question answered, thank you very much. But I did have one comment and it concerns me that we are paying for staff sickness at the full rate for some considerable time, which I'm hoping that we're not going to be doing it indefinitely, because it's very rare for any employer to be paying after six months for pay.
Six months.
It's not, it's not six months, yeah.
It's been a long time.
It's certainly not been six months.
Well, on and off, it's been more than two months.
It's not been six months consistently.
But I spoke to a member of the, I actually spoke to a member of the staffing committee about it and they were looking at it for six months. So that's, they're not here to answer that, but I, that's the only reason I.
It's on length of service and it's not six months.
No, but I I'm just, because I was told, and that's why I wanted to just bring it up, because it seems a concern that I can't go into all the details, but the sickness, as far as I was told as well, has changed. So I I would like, I would like to know that the staffing committee is going to meet and try and sort this out because we're paying a lot of money each month.
Councillor Duff.
I've been looking at some of the information we provide to councillors. And we only ever provide year-to-date figures, which in my accounting mind is kind of worthless. So I wanted to propose that this is a form that is printed out that we work from each month and it has receipts with transaction details on it. You haven't got a copy of this, it was just to sort of see whether you would think it would be useful. Along with everything that gets put on to RealTus, along with, you know, I've got something here, all Saints invoice, InContact, state, litter picker. So would councillors, it looks something that is clear pages long of just stuff, but it would then give a clearer picture of what was happening in month. And there's also the idea of producing a detailed income and expenditure for the in-month. Again, it's it's not a weighted tone, it's three pages long, but it details everything. It has actual current month, actual year-to-date, current annual budget variance and funds available. So I just thought, because we don't see the in-month spend, we only ever see year-to-date, would councillors find something like that useful?
I think that's.
Absolutely.
I think I think that is what we've been been asking for for quite some time, well, I have. Because and it will be brilliant for the fact that we wouldn't have to then send an email causing a shock because we have thirteen questions, because we would look at that and go, yeah, that's what that was for. It just makes sense.
Right, so if I then, when I. Right, so if I then, when I do the reconciliations, what I can do is make sure that these forms will then get. So you might get more finance information than you really want to be looking at, but I think it may just help that we have the reconciliation, we then have the year-to-date figures, which to me are meaningless. They only divide by three and got many files. I just think the in-month ones would serve us better.
Lovely, so does councillor Daphne have a description of the item itself?
Hold on a second. Well, these are convenient and in true fashion, here's one I prepared earlier. Well, actually, no, here's one Cathy and Melanie prepared earlier.
Are these both for me?
Yes, it's two different forms.
Brilliant, thank you.
Sorry.
I need your glasses, I don't have any glasses. Relax, we'll be asking.
That's very thorough, thank you. Go ahead, Martin.
Because we do have like a number of items on there, but I wasn't sure which one I asked this on. But I was hoping, because it was an internal audit report and has been raised. We don't have yet appointed the two councillors who verify the invoices or payments. So that when this comes to the meeting, we can trust that they are happy with it. Because they're supposed to sign each invoice, sign the payment things, and then they come here and tell us that they've done it. So I'm just wondering when we are going to get around to appointing those two people, please.
Do you mean the bank secretaries?
No, no, this is, this is what the auditor requires, is that we, that we, we have two members at least who will visit the office before the meeting, at the convenient time of the office, to verify the previous month's payments. And we used to do it.
Oh, these things?
Yeah, basically everything there's like, I've heard that now we've gone back to the system of having numbered invoices, which I was surprised that that had gone out of the way, but what used to happen, because I did it many years ago, is you used to go to the office, you were given a room folder of the invoices that had been paid that month, the bank statement and the chequebook, such, which we don't use now. You'd obviously have some different system to show what you paid and you had to initial every one to show that it was verified. And it hasn't happened for many years and it keeps being said that we're not following the correct procedure. I know that it's an important thing, I'm.
Yeah, I, okay, so understood, we do have that.
So Anna trims it all.
Yeah, so we do have that ability to do so on these forms to reconcile, I'd suggest.
Oh, that was the other thing on the form, it's got the chairman's name as Paul Annesley.
We'll change that, but duly noted. So propose therefore that we accept on block the items nine one, nine two, nine three, nine four and nine five, representing all aspects of the financial support this month. Do you have a second there? Thank you councillor Daphne. All those in favour of accepting those? Thank you councillor Brooks, are you abstaining?
Yeah, on the basis that they've not been verified by two members.
That has carried. Very well, ah, so we move therefore the amount from that two. Item twelve, councillor Brooks, pay for the finance committee. You have a course, eh?
Yes, I do, if I can, one second, I'll do mine there. I thought I'd find it, I took this all in order and then I was got.
Would you like to follow this copy?
It's fourteen, twelve, twelve.
That's what it is, that's our twelve and thirteen, now I'm always confused, I mean. Oh no, fourteen is the market schools.
No, we're talking about the twelve.
Number twelve, you've got yours there, just a second, so I can just make sure I get the right.
Well, just the finance committee.
Yeah, basically, I'll try and keep it very brief. The, the finance committee has been meeting and doing the job of setting the budget and obviously over the end of annual returns, whatever, and myself and also the press have found it very difficult that the meetings have been held in the office. And there was also exempt things in the office, which waiting on a committee that has no powers, which is a bit odd anyway. But the thing is, it's not to say that the people can't do it. It's, my proposal this evening is basically to reduce work for the office so that they don't have to produce an agenda. The working group that if you decide to set one up tonight, if you disband the finance committee, will have the same agreement, but you will be able to go and sit down with Cathy and the clerk and work without the public and press there, because we don't actually need to be, to be there. It gives more freedom and they will report back to council in, in the same way. And so that was, the benefit of that is really just to make the job easier for the office, give freedom away from a formal meeting setting. So you don't have to call the meeting if it's, if it's a working group or Anna, the chairman and the clerk and somebody else. Then you can just say, right, we're coming in on Wednesday for a meeting. And there's no three-day notice, you just agree, because you will know that your task and finish for that year is to actually prepare the budget at the end of the year. And you've already done the annual return for this year. So to me, the finance committee's role would be, if they were still existing, would be just to be working on the budget. So I feel that, tell me to shut up.
No, I don't think you made a, you made a complaint.
I put it all detailed in the paper. So it's not saying that the committee is bad or anything wrong, it's just to say that there's an easier way to do it.
And I thank you for your kind words about councillor Daphne.
And, and the, the other, the other point on there which I'm proposing, which I was hoping that Anna would, because I feel stupid while you propose something, because we, we did approve Anna to do the work as the financial proper officer and it was supposed to come to council to review each month. It didn't come last month and I haven't had an answer from Anna whether she wants to continue. So I'm hoping that before that proposal is considered, we will get an answer if she wants to continue for another month, which I'd be very grateful, I'm sure. But it's not my job to do that. It should have been the office who are preparing the paper to get that approval each month. If we don't want to do it each month, then tonight we have to say six months. But we, it's up to the members around the table to consider it and if they want to remember, I think they'll be happy.
Thank you very much councillor Brooks, would anyone care to weigh in on this?
Thank you, I think it's a very sensible idea to fully supportive of the paper that Martin, councillor Brooks is proposing.
I would be inclined to agree, I can't see anything particularly contentious about that. Very well, would you like to?
So the, the first proposal then is that we would propose the, I don't think it was the correct word, but the disposal abolition, dissolving of the existing finance committee.
Very well, should we have a vote on that? And so that's your proposition? Have we got a second there? Thank you councillor Clark, all those in favour of item number one, the abolition of the finance committee as is? That's two, the UK, you're abstaining.
I think no.
All those against? Okay. So others and abstentions, one.
Okay, and then proposal number three, as we no longer have a financial committee, is for the establishment of the financial working group. So we need to decide how that working group is going to be laid out. Well, I'm hoping it will still be Anna and the chairman at least, but it will need at least one more member, I think, as well as the clerk or deputy clerk.
Well, shall we, shall we ask those that would like to step forward and?
I don't know if, is it anybody new or Christopher Clark? I, I don't want.
Well, I might as well make use of my financial training, um, yeah, okay.
Shall I hear? Yep, I will, I'll put myself forward for that as well.
Okay.
I think that's, thank you very much for volunteering your time again, Anna, I appreciate it. And your significant skills, so thank you.
And you'll enjoy the freedom of not having me sitting in there.
Lovely, would anyone else care to put their name to it? Oh, look at this, well, so fantastic, we've got councillor Clark and councillor Harris.
I would second all those names.
Certainly. I'll pose then, put those, go ahead, that, that forms in the working group. Councillor Brooks is happy to second that, all in favour of that as a working group? There we are, that's unanimous.
Then my last proposal is really dependent on whether Anna wants to continue as our financial proffor. So I know it's been a lot of hard work and I appreciate it.
Um, but there have been some comments that have put me off, particularly around the engagement of the internal auditor and the Metcalf bill. Um, so it, those two particular comments led me to believe that no matter what I did, I was damned if I did and I was damned if I didn't, which has in a way put me off. Because everything I have done has been for the benefit either of OTC or OCA. We were running out of time with the auditor, I took advice and I was told he could be retrospectively approved. And if he didn't do the audit when he did, we would have been non-compliant and fined. Now, this is where I was damned if I did and damned if I didn't, I wasn't supposed to engage the auditor unit actually. But had I not, I would then have got a slating for it being non-compliant and us being fined. With Metcalf, we were at risk of being liable for the late payment clause, which is currently based, I've got to look it up, plus eight percent, meaning we could have been liable for an additional six thousand pounds on top of the forty seven. So it was deemed prudent that we paid it promptly and saved ourselves the late payment clause. The thing I have got was doing that, I slated again. Had I not done it, we could have been liable for six thousand pounds, I would have slated again. So it's a case of, can you please understand that I'm doing this on my day off? I was given a day off and work on health grounds and I'm spending my day in here doing the finance, concerned that no matter what I do, I'm going to be criticised for it. So if that is going to continue, I won't be doing the job. I want to be able to sit in that office, do the finance without fear. But if, if it's going, if I'm going to be slated for no matter what I do, then no, I'm not doing it.
Understood, and I'll say something, I'm my first, councillor Brooks, thank you.
Yeah, I, when councillor Douthwaite was undertaking the, these financial acts, it was in a time of incredibly unprecedented, yeah, administrative issues, shall we say. We had little to no capacity in the office whatsoever at that time. And councillor Douthwaite was good enough, as she said, to sacrifice her personal time to come in here and has chosen the lesser of a number of evils and has actually protected the council from paying a number of fines and, as I say, late payment clauses, that I think should be supported. Furthermore, it's worth suggesting that actually it's incredibly difficult to engage an internal auditor without the support of the LTO, L I A L C. And the internal auditor was in fact put too early to do that. So came already with a degree of protection built in. So I absolutely commend the difficult choices that councillor Douthwaite had to make at that time. And I think that we should, as a council, give her our full support back in, in the choices which she did make for our benefit. Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I, I find it a bit difficult because I think councillor Douthwaite was put in a very difficult position. I asked and another councillor asked for that payment to be brought to council meeting long before councillor Douthwaite authorised the payment, which she shouldn't, which she admits because of the penalties. It was not brought to council, we had two meetings that it could have come to council. And it's, it's, yeah, we keep being told we're going to do it properly and we're going, we're moving on. But you know how long have I been here now when I was invited back? And every meeting we're told we're going to do it properly next month and we don't. It was a significant sum of money, she was put in a very difficult position by the fact she's, I admire that she sat in public saying, but yes, I did it, because some wouldn't have a few years back. Um, it's the same with the internal audit, you know, we didn't have huge problems at the time the letter was sent. So I have an issue with that, but, but it's still.
But check the time, councillor Brooks.
That was May, that letter was written in May, inviting, and the letter clearly says that, that councillor had consent from her council, now to me, that wasn't the case. So we're sending a letter in May and it could have been ratified between May, we're now in coming up to the middle of July. So I have another one because I don't want to put her off because nobody else can do it. But what I'm saying is probably not, I'll say Anna because it's, she is Anna. If I don't blame Anna, I blame the council as a whole for what's happened, whether that's in the office or whether it's here, because I asked for the correct procedures to be followed. You all get fed up with me asking, so it's, you know, she's put in a huge difficult position and it should never happen again.
Thank you, councillor Douthwaite.
Um, the letter came in May from the internal auditor. Can councillor please be reminded our clerk went off sick at the end of April? I have, um, then we tried to put him off because he was supposed to come in the twenty third of, of May. We tried to put him off so we could make sure the accounts were correct. And it again got to the point where we were in June and it had to be done by the end of June. Our accounts had to be on the, the web at the end, by the, on the thirtieth of June. So we were right up against it when we didn't have the clerk here in order to ensure that the paperwork was correct. And we were, you know, providing the right information for the auditor. Um, so I, I just think that the comments that have been made about, um, you know, you shouldn't have done this, you shouldn't have done that, were not helpful.
But it's a fact, if I went out and paid something, went in there now and paid something, I would be doing wrong. But what I'm saying is that let's hope it doesn't happen again.
We, we have made steps to stop that from happening so that all, I've requested to the office that all payments above five thousand can now come with a generalising or a paper coming in, which.
We can.
Excuse me councillor Brooks, I'm talking, thank you. That brings about that payment so that it can be ratified at full council. And that is going to happen. And we must remember that all of the Metcalf payments, although yes, I agree, should be brought back again to subsequent ratification at their stage payment stages, they have already been ratified in the first instance. So it is not like we do not know about this payment, it is not like we are acting improperly with the public case. It all has been.
We'll come to that later, but, I mean, I.
So.
So does Anna want to, because obviously we're stuck on this agenda, item number four.
I don't know, to be honest.
Because we need, otherwise you won't be able to do anything if we don't appoint you tonight and then that might upset you.
What, that I won't be appointed? Now it means I won't have to give up my day off.
Yeah, well, you have to make a decision tonight, please.
Um, well, I don't really think I have a choice unless, sorry, I keep wanting to call you Paul and you're not, you're John. I don't know why I want to call you Paul. Have you got an accountancy background?
No.
No? Right. That's a long answer.
What we'd like to say is that I think that the vast majority of this council will absolutely support the undertaking. And certainly despite the fact we might not have a back, financial background or offer as much support as possible.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping, hoping that, um, that you won't have to do it for an incredibly long time.
Okay, I'll, I'll carry on.
For months?
Yes.
Let's take it month to month. That's very common, I think. Thank you very much. So second, I thank you councillor Clark, all those in favour of councillor Douthwaite remaining as the proper officer for next month, that is carried in numbers that we need. Lovely. Okay. Onto item number thirteen, thank you. Thank you. Thirteen. Ah, something a little bit more lighthearted, picket tables. So councillor Watson's paper, do you like to put forward? I'm quite happy to.
I've been asked to put it forward, so I'm actually, I mean, I did ask if there was any further information on the, um, recycled plastic. It sounds awful, but they're very good, which we purchased for the castle. And Sally Anne was hoping that you would go with, with that option. I don't know whether it's within the budget that she's suggesting to us. Um, but the, the proposal picture of the plywood one or whatever you call it, the pine one, don't look like they were last in the children's playground for more than a week and look like two by two timbers. So I'm, I'm hoping that.
And the one she has, that they are.
It's more expensive, it's six hundred and twenty-four pounds.
Remember, we have to have less unless you want to increase the budget. So that's all I would say. Um, is that the one with the disabled access, wheelchair access?
Doesn't look like it. I'll just put that on.
Certainly. Because we were talking about having that because of the older people who live nearby.
Lovely. Thank you councillor Brooks.
They do look like wood.
Councillor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I've got two points to make about this. Um, firstly, if we put a bench there for the students from Harrington School to, to, um, use, are we going to do something about the bin? Because it's pointless buying seats and putting, and encouraging the students to sit there unless there's someone for them to put their rubbish. And I don't mean a little bin. I mean something like a grunden because I think sometimes it can be a huge amount of, a huge amount of litter from their lunch, et cetera. And there are photographs on the web, piles of rubbish around the bins and essentially we feel it is bad news. So if we're going to put chair there or chairs there, we need to provide receptacles for them to put the rubbish in. The second thing is, are these going to be nailed down? Because otherwise they'll move them. There has to be some way of keeping them in place. Simply put, it's a bit like the benches they put outside over the Baptist church that come from the bicycle, I call it spoken hum. I think they take them out every day because they're not wet, they're not, they're not stuck to the ground. They can just be moved. The students, I suspect, and the other people just move them. So unless there's a way to secure into the ground, I think this needs more thought in, put into it.
Councillor Harris?
I agree about having them fixed, but I have spent, as you saw my CV, quite a long time in the environmental business and the waste business. And even in Oakham, those sorts of things will disappear in time. Also, if you put a bin, you will get rubbish. Do you want to recycle in the same ways we do at home in wherever this is or not? Because if you put all rubbish in, all mixed recycling in there, sorry, mixed waste in there, we're not recycling, which we should be doing. Contrary to what you may think, if you, if you don't put a bin there, you actually don't always get a lot of litter. I know it's counterintuitive, but if you put a bin there, you will get litter. You'll have to employ somebody or somebody who will have to empty it.
Yeah, that would have to be increased onto the light bill contract, I suspect. Councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I, I think, um, the Baptist church you mentioned, there was, um, they had a bench stolen because it wasn't secured. They might be secured now, but originally.
No, no, the, the bench is outside the Baptist church now. I think if either I spoke in that.
Yeah, I think you have one of yours taken.
Well, yes, yeah.
The, the, the bins, there are bins there, which you mentioned are overflowing. The bins were put to mark our boundary because we don't own or lease the whole of Centenary Hill. Um, we do have an issue. I know it's not quite a disagenda item because we raised them for us. We have quite an issue with the fact that the contractors agree, which is inadequate. The bins are often, we had the issue last summer with the doggy blue bags.
That is off topic councillor Brooks.
Yeah, so we, we, we need to look at that. Um, I, I don't really know whether we can continue with this because I said if there were too many questions, I would ask it to be deferred because I, I really think it needs to probably be, not saying that we're not going to do it.
No, 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 no.
But I think it needs to come back to us when Sally Anne's here with a paper showing what she really wants and addressing how we're going to fix them and, and the, the correct costs that are going to go down. And if we want to add an extra bin next to it, you know, it is.
Oh, that cost a bit of time.
Yeah, it needs to be, I think we're just, we're not, I'm not criticizing it.
It's more information.
We just need to defer it because we're being asked things that I can't really answer at all.
On that basis, I would suggest that we heartily encourage this paper to be brought back to the next.
So I think it's an excellent idea for students and also the people at the camp.
Yeah, and that's why I want it for wheelchair ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so let's have, well, I'm all in favour of bringing this back to the next meeting. I'll propose that second please. Councillor Clark, all those in favour?
Channing.
There we are. Sorry, rattled through that one. Brilliant. Thank you. You've got that. Lovely. Okay, councillor Brooks, another from unit fourteen.
Yes, sorry, it's me again. Um, this is quite an important one to me because, um, we have had this mentioned through some traders' meetings that the market is a bit dwindling and suffering. And while I was there recently, I noticed that, I don't know if we really, well, it is stealing. Um, there are now two traders who are taking electricity without paying from what was supposed to have been disconnected but because of the clerk's absence, they're taking it from our Christmas light boxes. Um, one of the market traders who is the manager, I'll sort of unofficially because there's been new agreements. There isn't, they can basically, um, he has an agreement and is the only person who has an agreement with the hotel and pays handsomely there. But when I talked to him about it, because there was an incident when I was going to point to Cathy, the misuse of the electricity supply. Um, I had an incident when I was taking a picture which has been resolved. It was a bit unpleasant. Um, but we, I would like the council to read what I've, I'm sure you have, and really consider this because we could use still money to pay for the installation of proper points because he, Nigel's telling me that the thing that is stopping people coming here is there is no power around the marketplace. So I was hoping that we would agree to look into this. It's not committing to it at the moment, but working with, possibly Cathy, as she's in the office too, with Nigel. He says you've got his contact details. And I want to explain that once the council has got a dedicated supply that is metered, that Nigel said he would be willing as the market traders to take it on. So we would not be responsible for the billing. We would just use still money or whatever reserves to pay for a safe installation that would be isolated either by a key switch or a box. And he would be willing to guide, and I think he said, but I won't quote him, that he would provide them with their leads and plugs and that's how he recoup's the money, is that every trader would have a plug-in meter to special sockets that then he would build them or so he would be responsible as the leaseholders with the fishman for the supply, not us. But I think as a town council, we could do this because it's, it does benefit the residents of the town. And if we can get a better market, this would probably be good.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. Are you happy that you would be, would you be happy to add with the, with the market manager on this one?
Um, well, initially I would like. I would initially, I think you'd be happy to work with Cathy, but if I was needed to help with anything like pictures or go down and identify locations with it, I would. I wouldn't be happy to go with the other leaseholder, but.
Okay, so it's a. So it's a very, it's a very, in my opinion, this is a very open paper. It explores a number of possibilities.
I have done propose.
Um, while thinking about doing, um, the market, um, with my hat on, it might be helpful to think about doing Jail Street as well, primarily because obviously the farmer market every third Saturday. It's also the craft market every first Saturday. And having a power supply in Jail Street may open it up to, for other uses and encouraging folk to come into Oakham for other matters. So I just think, while we do an exploration perhaps we should include Jail Street as well.
You happy to include that in the thing, councillor Brooks?
Um, I think it's something that we should bring as a, sorry, as a separate thing. I don't object because I would like to know whether the town partnership were going to pay for the electricity. And I don't, and I, and I do speak to the lady who does the crafting and there doesn't seem to be an issue as important as the market at the moment. So I'm not saying we won't do it, but I think it's a separate. I don't want to confuse it. If Cathy's going to be working with, it would be two separate parts from that.
Would you be happy to look into both of those?
Yeah, it's a great one.
I think that it would be worthwhile, whilst we're doing one, I think it would be prudent because we will likely be in a sense of this to facilitate this. But I think the minutia of this can be, can be discussed with the relevant stakeholders at the appropriate time. So I would suggest actually that we do look.
Because we might have to build if they have people, but then it's really hard to do it.
Which is fine, but, but we can have that. We can start the exploration steps without having to, without, without pinning ourselves into anything.
Because we have to come back with costs and we don't have that much.
So.
So we're looking at an additional proposal at the end to say that Cathy could look into, to get, to get a quote. It's not saying we're going to do it, but to get a quote for a same setup in Jail Street. And maybe you could speak to Chris to find out how many points they may need. I don't know. Because you do the farmers' markets, you're doing it. And they use generators, which must be. You see, that, that was an important thing to say and to think. I think I put it in my paper. I did this a couple of weeks ago. Is that there is a rule on the market because many people don't realise people apart from the hotel actually live and they are banned from having generators in there. So that is the issue. People come along to Nigel and say, I've got this thought and I want to do this, but I've got my generator. Where can I put it? And he says, no. So if they've got the electricity.
There may be an exemption for run silent generation, but I don't know.
It's probably too expensive for a market.
They are, they are very dear, yes.
Yeah. So would you like me to read my proposal?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, to seek formal approval, um, for the clerk, who you have been for the assistant clerk, to change that. To obtain quotes for the installation of new meter power supplies at Oakham Marketplace, subject to satisfactory quotes, the clerk or designated officer would then prepare a recommendation to full council for the expenditure and the transfer of metered electricity payments responsibility to the market committee. So we're making it very clear that we won't be responsible for, it's not to create another job for Cathy.
Would you like to do these as separate items, councillor Brooks, or unblocked?
We can do it unblocked because then we've got, that Cathy will liaise with the market manager. Um, and basically to determine where they want sockets. He pointed around and there was no, I was going to draw, needs to be visited as I visit. Um, and then the last part of the proposal was the fact that we actually disconnect our points, which are only designed for, um, Christmas lights. And we have basically a, a big safety issue with the box that's been plugged in at the moment because we have one store who are draining, you know, they lost their power because it was becoming too costly. They run a whole air conditioning, freezers, fridges and all sorts just from one thing that's designed for low voltage, A V D things. And now we have another van.
Shall we keep coming in?
Without saying who it is.
No, no, that's fine.
Another van that is tapped into that one socket as well. So I think that's safety. And they have been warned of this. Um, but Nigel's had a copy of this.
So that's the proposal. Just to move things along, councillor Brooks.
I'd then to add that whilst the, the clerk is doing this, that, um, she can obtain a quote for Jail Street, working with Christopher Clark to find out how many power points are needed.
Councillor Harris?
I wish you'd be happy with that then. But I'm also subject to satisfactory quotes. But I should be, the council decided the quotes are satisfactory.
They'll not come back to me.
Yeah, it has to come back to council. I think it respects.
So we can at least, yes.
The wording perhaps. Yeah, it's my wording. It's, I sometimes get things wrong.
Lovely. Happy, are we happy to, to approve that as an amendment as well, just subject to a satisfactory quotes in that?
Yes, if there's a mistake in my paper, then that can be corrected.
Lovely.
Martin's. Councillor Brooks's.
He has, yes. I will happily second that one. All those in favour of accepting that paper? Let's see, I'm just thinking. And I carried unanimously. Lovely.
If you need my help, Cathy, I can help.
Lovely. Okay, on to item number fifteen. Here we are. So payment of the Metcalf invoice. Uh, this is one of the stage payments for the Church Street toilet refurb.
Um, Cathy, do they know that we're not paying within time frame?
I, they know, we're just on the meeting tonight. Okay, yeah. They expect it tomorrow.
Councillor Brooks, go ahead.
When, when I visited and observed the inspection of the toilets, um, it was, it was said that Oakham Town Council was good and that there wouldn't be a need to hurry because we'd always been good to these contractors. Um, but anyway, there was a snag list that was drawn up by one of these councillors to come to council. They didn't come to our last meeting. So I would be asking whether that snag list has been done.
To the, it was sent to Metcalf.
Uh, they ratified it.
As far as I know, yes.
Because we're still missing a sign. They took down a perfectly good sign saying toilet, so, whatever it was. And we don't have a sign now, but we paid for one.
I believe that's got that, that's fine.
This is what the.
Shall we, if we've had the snag list, let's ensure that whatever is on that has been done.
The council or what's with sent it. And I sent it on to them.
So I would have liked to have seen that this evening to know what was to agree. But the other point is that we come back to this thing again, which is so frustrating. But the other point is that we come back to this thing again, which is so frustrating, because all it says is that power invoice to pay the next stage payment as agreed in March twenty five. Now, earlier in the meeting, you highlighted that. Now, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I keep bringing it up.
So councillor, sorry, I don't mean to stop you mid-flow there, but bear in mind that we have suggested that we understand that that is a legal requirement, that we wish to move towards compliance in that regard. Is your next point pertinent?
It is, because we can't just approve an agenda item that says to pay the next stage payment as agreed in March. It requires us to put the.
So we have agreed that that is going to happen, councillor Brooks, as I've just said, so it.
But it's not there.
Of course it's not.
Because it should be there.
It should, and we acknowledge that that will be on subsequent meetings.
I told this every month, chairman, and it's frustrating. You know, I had it from the previous chairman who sat there and rather, I don't know why, he read out this financial regulation word for word and said, that's how we should be doing it.
If you kindly take me at my word then councillor.
I will, but I will explain why it's an issue, because I also wrote and asked for a statement of the payments, because I cannot make sense from here, because in here it says April stage two Edison's, which I assume is the toilet, and it says twenty one thousand pounds. July Edison's stage three, fifty four thousand pounds.
Because if you look at the.
Edison's stage four, fourteen thousand pounds, but there's no mention in here about the forty four thousand that was paid last month. So I sent a polite email asking the council for an up-to-date statement of what is owed, because as far as I'm concerned, I can't authorise that, because it doesn't have to correct local government act requirements. It even stating what the original value is, what is outstanding, because we were told that last month's forty four thousand was the last payment.
Understood, councillor Brooks.
Now we're being asked to pay sixty five thousand pounds, is it important, you know? You're asking please to approve sixty five thousand pounds tonight, and I have no evidence that it's due.
You have no evidence that it's due?
No, because these, these figures and things have been probably wrongly, don't make any sense. You know, it's, we have to, we have a stage one here, twenty five thousand one hundred and seventy. I don't even know what the final bill is because of the snags and things, so I can't accept that, chairman, because.
Understood.
Because I asked very politely for a statement of all the payments and what was due to be paid as the final payment, knowing that the forty four thousand was told that that was the last payment, which apparently it's not. It's a lot of money, we're not talking about, you know, trading companies, we're talking.
Councillor, I understand that you're, that you are concerned about this. I am also, because it is a lot of money. However, we have got an originally ratified course of action that we decided some time ago at full council that that management money wouldn't be paid. Admittedly, you are not furnished with the paperwork to support that at present, but are you at least, are you at least happy that once upon a time this was agreed upon, I made payments according to that check?
I am happy that back in, whenever you said that this council agreed, which I didn't because of contracting issues I abstained, sat over there. But I am happy that we have paved something towards it, but I do not have in front of me tonight the outstanding balance, which is a legal requirement on that agenda, should say what the payment is for and the outstanding balance and the outstanding balance after this payment. So if that is the final payment, it would show that there'd be nothing owing. There is nothing there to tell me what we owe for the toilet.
Councillor Duff.
Um, if you add the twenty three nine one one dot fifty, forty seven four three nine dot ten, and sixty seven, sixty five seven five eight dot six seven, you will have a hundred and thirty seven thousand one hundred and nine pound and twenty seven p, which I think will cover the contract. So by my mathematics, this should be the last payment.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that on there, and it, and it should be on there, we, we used to do it. Cathy said it hasn't been done since she's been here. There is a piece of local government act which has to be on there on all payments over five thousand pounds. And because this is a part payment, it should give clear minutes of the previous payments and that this is the final payment, because.
Understood, councillor Brooks, thank you, and I half right to my earlier comment.
But then you keep saying that, not you personally, the council keeps telling me for every month, we are going to do it properly. Is that done properly? No.
For sure, do so.
I will shut up before you tell me off, but it's just, you know, you're asked, this is a legal requirement. We are legally responsible that this is done properly. And the financial things that the council is the only legal obligation.
Okay.
Fifteen.
Yes, thank you. So, do I have a proposal to accept the payment of the Met Park invoice? Thank you very much, councillor Duffway. Anyone seconding? Thank you, councillor Clark, all those in favour of the payment? Three, all those against? Would you like that recorded, councillor Brooks? No, thank you, that's enough.
So can we, no, can we mean it that this is the final payment? Because we were honestly told in the meeting.
Recording on the.
But this wasn't, this wasn't visible on the computer.
Well, it's here in front of you, councillor.
But it is now, yes.
And those abstaining? One, thank you. Lovely, that carries.
I just want to ask a question about fifteen.
Yes, of course you can.
Go ahead, Cathy.
Would it not be better to include the five, leave the payment thing under item nine?
I, I.
Well, that's separate.
I know, that's another conversation.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate you saying that, because it would address all financial matters on the.
It has to be as that for agenda items, but it is a financial thing, so it wouldn't make sense to be near it.
Okay, so let's then hurry along to agenda item number sixteen. Would you like councillor Duffway to present this in the absence of councillors?
Yes. Um, from this, um, that the internal auditor's observation is that we don't actually have a general power of competence, because two thirds of councillors need to be elected and they're just co-opted. We also need a still qualified RFO, which we don't have. So, um, so we can't get the general power of competence. And so the proposal is to remove that from the policy documents. Also, um, on the thirteenth of February, we removed, when we, sorry, when we adopted the financial regulations, we didn't have and don't operate a petty cash system. So all cash perceived is valid in its entirety at the earliest convenience. So all references to petty cash removed from the policy documentation. So councillor Enslie did produce, um, a fresh, uh, systems of internal control, um, document. Um, for your refusal. Um, and it's just to follow on and comply with the internal auditor's suggestions.
Lovely. Any observations from you? Do you want us to go straight forward then, really?
Yes, yes, it's just to go on block.
On block, uh, it's just the one proposal?
Yeah, uh, the council adopted the new systems of internal control to satisfy observations from the internal auditor.
Are you proposing that, councillor?
I do.
I will second that one then. So all in favour of adopting the revised version three of the systems of internal control? In favour? Okay, against? And abstaining?
Unfalse, sorry.
Good for, okay, thank you councillor Brooks. So four, four, one abstain. That has carried a few. Okay, on to item number seventeen, Victoria Hall, so to review and, uh, please.
This will get easier, don't worry about that. Um, we have now received the surveyors' report, um, the four photographs are separate. Um, I hope everybody's had a chance to have a look through, and it was mainly, the proposal is that it's read and noted. Um, there's nothing for us to do at the moment other than read and note. So it was just basically having read and noted.
Councillor Brooks.
I did read it. Um, there's a few disappointing things, I thought I was ready to talk about it. And at first my attitude was, I'm not going to read it, because I didn't see the point of doing it, because we hoped that we were going to move there, we'd not had records on that. And I couldn't understand why, as tenants, we would be wanting a survey, because we would not be responsible for the repairs. But reading it was quite an opener, although disappointing that he didn't get access to the top of the building, because we paid a lot of money, um, for this, and if you've got a leaky roof, that causes all your problems below. So, um, it is sad, because a lot of it, um, comes down to past neglect. It is an old building, but the general maintenance seems to be zero. And I hope if we move there that we won't be expected to be cleaning out the drains and the guttering and all sorts of things. Um, but taking on all of the fact that we had agreed to move there, there was just one thing that, because I have lung, things asthma and throat infection and things like that, um, it said that the office is damp. So I would like that to be sorted before we moved our staff there, because damp causes huge problems for people's lungs if they're working in there all day. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, yes, it's, um, it was an interesting report, certainly. Any other questions, go ahead, councillor Duffway.
I mean, since we're only being asked to note the contents of the report, we didn't have difficulty with that. But I, councillor Brooks, I was somewhat dismayed to read about the condition of the building. Um, and I have to ask myself, if he talks in here about a little few two and three hundred thousand pounds, am I right? And that doesn't include, um, the most, kind of more comprehensive survey that would be needed. And I just wonder where on earth are they going to, you know, if we're going to move in there for, and we're talking about a fairly lengthy period of time, we must, must, we must make sure the building is fit for purpose for us to do that and picking up some of the points about to do with health and safety and so forth. And I was very dismayed to read this, and I wonder whether we need to go back and revisit the idea of moving.
I would generally echo, um, personally, the theme of you two gentlemen on that one. Um, it's a bit of an eye-opener, and it is certainly a catalyst for the conversation regarding this topic, I would argue.
I think.
I think that, yeah, we, we have matters to discuss.
Can we make a proposal then that Cathy brings back to paper that we revisit our move to Victoria Hall? Because I don't think anything's been done, even though we have proved to go to a solicitor's and that, because I think it would be good for us to have a discussion whether we want to continue down that road. So if I make a proposal.
Do you feel that the, that a formal meeting in the chamber is, is appropriate?
Well, I think we've all read it, and it's maybe, it's been made public, the document. So I think we can, we can't make that decision now, but I think it is time for people to read it again and think about whether we want to move. So I think if we could just make a proposal that at the next meeting, it's brought back for council to.
Review.
Review that decision.
To review, okay, so.
I'm happy to support, I think we just, in, after this report, we really need to go back and look at that decision again.
So, um, just to avoid any ambiguity going ahead for, for the next meeting, what, what is the proposal for a payment to be raised to, what is the, what is the aim of the review?
Well, I just think, you know, we, we just need to look and see what, I, I need to go back now and see what papers we've had in the past, but I think there was, can I sit down?
Yeah, yes.
There was talk about moving to Victoria Hall later this year, and it does make a lot of sense, because clearly it's in the centre of the town, um, and it's a good focal point, and, and the, the monies that we provide would help them. But I just think in the light of this, we just need to think, is that the right decision for us to make?
Okay, so the proposal is that we bring this back to the next meeting for a review and conversation, can, go ahead, councillor Duffway.
Are we actually going to stick with the proposal that we noted the contents of the report?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can support that.
Yeah, we've got that proposal, an additional proposal for Cathy to.
We can do more than note.
So who's proposing the first one?
I, I'm, I'll propose all of them, Cathy to make it easy.
So for clarity, could you just, like to Cathy, what are your full proposal?
No, no, I think.
You're bringing it back.
If, if it needs a little adding, you've heard to Chris, but it's to bring back the council's decision to move to Victoria Hall for review.
So that is an additional proposal, we've got one we note, and then there's a two of that review.
Yeah. And I don't think we have to say any more, because we're not making any decisions.
No, that's, that's.
So if we.
So that proposal, I'll second that one now, unless councillor Clark wants to. All those in favour of, except for now, that is unanimous. My goodness, is that it? So, thank you very much for your time, and date of time of the next meeting, sixth of August twenty twenty five. Six thirty as usual. Thank you very much.